As the live streaming will commence shortly.
Recording in progress.
Good evening councillors, officers and members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's planning committee meeting. We do have some technical issues, so there we only have audio that's working at the moment and we're having troubles in getting our visual up and running. I declare this meeting open at 6:54pm. My name is Julie Williams and I'm the chairperson of tonight's planning meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome all to tonight's meeting and via virtual for those who are watching online. This meeting has been livestreamed and a recording will be made available as soon as practical on the council website. I'd like to start by acknowledging the Warranjeri people, the traditional owners of the land, and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging and their continuing connection to the land, water and culture. This evening I'd like to introduce you to our councillors. I have councillor Suzanne Newton, our deputy mayor, who's currently online, councillor Emily Demetriadis, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Rennie, I have councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Tim Lawrence and councillor Gaetano Greco. Councillor Lena Messina is an apology this evening. I also would like to introduce you to our officers. I have Vanessa, Neil, Matt, Robert, who are here this evening, and let's start. So do we have any disclosures of interest, councillors or officers, that you'd like to declare in reference to this item? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the planning meeting that was held on the 9th of October 2023? I have councillor Greco as the mover and councillor Rennie as the seconder. I'll put that to vote, all those in favour, and that has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Cancel, as we have a health and safety responsibility to ensure that everybody attending or who is online, that feels safe physically and mentally and emotionally. Councillors, I will be permitting questions to the officers prior to the commencements of the debate this evening, so if I feel that there's been sufficient time in reference to asking those questions, I'll use the governance rules to continue on and start the debate. So we'll go straight into this evening's application, which is for the planning permit for 159 Collin Street Thornbury. Officers will present to the committee and brief their presentation. We have questions and we also have submitters this evening. We have six submitters this evening who will be speaking and they will have three minutes each to speak on the item. So over to our officers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillors. This is a proposal to construct two double-storey dwellings, including a basement and rooftop terrace at 159 Collin Street Thornbury. Each dwelling features four bedrooms, a retreat, ground floor secluded private open space, a rooftop terrace and two onsite car parking spaces that are each provided within separate basements and they're accessed via individual crossovers to the street. The subject site is general residential zone schedule one and has an overall site area of 526 square metres. The site slopes approximately 2.4 metres from south to north. Thirty-eight objections and one petition with 245 signatories at last check was received against the application on the key grounds of amenity impacts to neighbouring properties, overdevelopment, neighbourhood character concerns, visual bulk, consistency with the incremental change policy of the area, overlooking, overshadowing and impacts to existing solar panels. One letter of support was received for the application, which noted that the site is suited to the level of increased density proposed, that being a net increase of one additional dwelling on the lot. The proposal is compliant with all objectives and standards of clause 55 of the Darabin Planning Scheme. It appropriately responds to the preferred neighbourhood character guidelines for the precinct and is consistent with the incremental housing change designation that applies to the site and broader area in providing a high quality contemporary design that allows for a moderate increase in housing density, that being from one dwelling on the lot to two. Officers would like to formally acknowledge a minor clerical error on the agenda that was circulated. Specifically on page 20 of that report, the assessment refers to the eastern wall and boundary, where this section of the assessment should refer to the western boundary wall. This clarification does not impact our assessment or the officer recommendation in this instance, and the report is otherwise accurate. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and issue a notice of decision to grant a planning permit, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go over to questions to our councillors. Does councillors have any questions? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question in relation to the interpretation of permeability on-site. The report suggests that the designers' proposed meets the requirements. I've also received quite a bit of correspondence from adjoining property owners and nearby property owners contesting that. I'm just wanting to get an indication from officers about how permeability has been calculated and some insight into what the officers' response is to those concerns.
Thank you for the question councillor. Through you, Mayor. So permeability has been assessed against the definition provided in the planning scheme and also the supplementary practice note that we use to make that measure. Importantly, the tools that we use to make this measurement and to check the accuracy of the plans provided by the applicant include drafting programmes that we can accurately check that measure against. So we've assessed throughout the assessment of the application to this point, the permeability on-site against those areas that can be considered a permeable area. It's shown on one of the plans in the package of plans provided with the report. We've double-checked and triple-checked those calculations in our programmes that we use to check this, and the permeability measurement of 23.2%, which is referenced on the plans and in the report, is accurate by our measure to the definitions in the planning scheme, so specifically res code and the practice note that supplements that.
Councillor McCarthy, and then I've got councillor Demetriadis. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, thank you for the response and probably just a supplementary in relation to that. So just to confirm, the interpretation of permeability is the same as, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to, because the question's been put to me by a resident, I'm going to pass it on, is the same as would be assessed by any other municipal authority and any other council, because it is the state-based interpretation of permeability, not a Darabin-specific interpretation. Could you just confirm that for me, please?
Thank you for the supplementary question councillor. And through you, Mayor, yes, to be clear, the measurement of permeability is a state provision within all planning schemes in Victoria that we've assessed it against. So we've measured it against that standard, that definition, using the state standard practice note as well as a supplementary. There's areas that we are unable to include, that any municipality would be unable to include in that calculation. In this case, that area as calculated doesn't include for this development, any of the areas above basement, the two driveways, the pools, pool equipment as well, including outdoor showers. So none of those spaces have been included in that calculation, and we've again double-checked that again today and come to 23.2%, which complies with the 20% minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Demetriadis? There's no need to stand.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask further clarification about the limited landscaping and extensive driveways, pavings, pathways and pools in the design that can contribute to a lack of permeability.
Thank you councillor. Through you, Mayor. If we could request you specifically identify your question?
Would you be able to provide us some background information on that or how that's been addressed in the officers' recommendation?
I'll have a go at answering this. I'll confirm if it does answer your question once I've given a response. So we've assessed the application against... Sorry for that. We've assessed this application against the relevant planning scheme policies. So the key ones here for us are res code, which includes a landscaping standard and the neighbourhood character policy that applies to the area, which sets out some expectations around provision of landscaping. That's an assessment that we also make against the site and surrounds as it exists on the ground, so to speak. In this area, I'd say there's generally, on review of the plans and the report, consistently narrower side setbacks, larger rear setbacks and front setbacks, where landscaping as proposed in this application is consistent with what we'd see in the area. The application proposes five canopy trees in the front setback and planting is proposed along the side setbacks with space in the rear setback to provide planting as well. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. You mentioned that it's consistent with the area. How did that observation come about?
Thank you for the question councillor. Through you, Mayor. So a site survey based on use of online mapping that we have, site visits to the area and reviews of the plans that were provided by the developer. Thank you.
So is that an opinion of someone, a subjective opinion or that particular comment? I'm just trying to clarify.
Thank you for the supplementary question. That's a merits-based assessment by the planning officer who's been assigned the file.
Thank you. I've just got another question. I'd like to ask some further clarification about a potential lack of permeability that may contribute to the identified flooding risk. Can you please provide some clarity on that particular topic?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor. I'd point you towards our previous answer regarding permeability in that the application complies with the relevant measure of 20%, so 23.2% permeable area is provided as part of the application. The officer recommendation includes conditions relevant to flood risk and the report talks to this. In some detail, nuisance flooding is what's addressed. This is a site that is not affected by a flooding overlay as such. It's mapping that council has available that identifies a potential flood risk. As such, we've put in place a condition to address that nuisance flooding concern.
Just to clarify, what was the condition that you have put in to address the flooding concern, the potential flooding concern?
Thank you for the question. I'll just turn to that page. Give me one moment. So the nuisance flooding concern is addressed via a number of conditions in the recommended permit conditions. That's addressed under condition 1K, which requires a swale drain to be provided along the western side of the site to reduce and prevent nuisance flooding occurring over the subject site. That's then dealt with with a standalone condition further in the recommendation, condition nine.
Mayor, I do have another question. I just got to check my notes, but you can go on to another councillor.
Councillors, do we have any other questions in reference to this item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, I'd like to ask a question to our officers. Just in terms of neighbourhood character, can we just get some elaboration on how the boldness and the bulk of this particular development fits into the softer post-war Darabin neighbourhood character study?
Thank you councillor. Through you, Mayor. The neighbourhood character study, apologies. It directs that contemporary, apologies.
Take a minute, that's fine.
Directs that contemporary development is encouraged in this precinct. The contemporary development provides more of a robust design outcome, including more robust materials that have longevity into the future. So the incorporation of the architectural style that you see references the architectural style in the street, but provides a contemporary, modern interpretation and architectural style outcome for the development.
Thanks. Any further question? I note that this particular application will require an additional driveway and an additional crossover. Given our crossover policy, which encourages less crossovers and not an expansion of crossovers, how does this particular project meet that requirement?
Thank you for the question councillor. Through you, Mayor. There's a number of assessments we have to make in terms of car parking, particularly crossovers. The crossover policy doesn't necessarily direct no new crossovers. It generally directs one crossover per dwelling, which is the case here, and also no net loss of on-street car parking or car parking more broadly in the area in providing two crossovers and retaining one space between those on the street, as well as two car parking spaces at minimum to each basement garage. The proposal complies with that requirement or that direction of the policy. The proposal's also compliant with the relevant standard and objective of res code in providing an acceptable width of crossover to the street.
That answered your question? Yep. Councillor Hannan, and then I'll come back to councillor Demetriadis.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for the officers, if I may. I've had a number of concerns raised to me and a couple of the main issues were in relation to overshadowing and overlooking. In terms of overshadowing, first question is, there seems to be some discrepancy in the way that north is calculated and therefore what the anticipated shadows will be. What if you could help clear that up? And the second question is, in terms of overlooking, I understand there's some conditions recommended to deal with the issue of, you know, a taller building next to the neighbouring property. Could you just explain how that's intended to be dealt with? Thank you.
Thank you for the question councillor. Through you, Mayor. I'll try and address each item in turn councillor. In terms of the questions around shadowing and the accuracy of the plans, the submitted plans that we, that council advertised, were prepared on the basis of a site survey that was prepared by a reputable surveying company. Officers have reviewed these plans at multiple times and were satisfied that the plans are accurately drawn and that they display overshadowing outcomes from the proposal, both in terms of overshadowing to open space and to adjoining solar energy facilities, that they show this correctly. We had updated shadow diagrams provided by the applicant, which confirmed that the shadow diagrams were drawn in accordance with the solar north point. Those plans also show the true north point and the site survey and other development plans at different points do show different north points. It's just important, I suppose, for us to note that there are several different north point terminologies applied in drafting plans and in sort of development plans. So these plans, while they do show some different use of a different north point, the plans broadly are accurate and the solar overshadowing diagram, sorry, have been checked quite closely to ensure the accuracy. So I hope that clarifies that concern. Overlooking, yes, the recommendation includes some conditions to address overlooking from the proposed development to the neighbouring development. Those conditions relate to overlooking to habitable rooms and habitable spaces. It's a fairly standard practice that where clarification may be required for overlooking impacts, that we would condition compliance with the planning scheme, which we've done in this case to ensure there is no overlooking, no unreasonable overlooking of adjoining dwellings. Thank you.
Councillor Demetriadis, are you ready? Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I know previously there was a reference made to swale drains. Can I just get some clarity as to how that will address the flooding risk?
Thank you for the question, through you, Mayor. When we assess these planning applications, our decisions and our conditions are informed by advice from internal referral authorities at council. So in this instance, our drainage and engineering team have reviewed the application alongside the planning officer and recommended that condition for the provision of the swale drain to address the flood risk. So when we were this application approved, we get plans submitted to comply with those conditions. Our engineering team would review those plans for the swale drain to confirm that it addresses the flood risk concern.
Sorry, I just wanted to know how that would work. I don't understand.
Sure, I'm sorry. Thank you for the supplementary. Through you, Mayor. The planning permit recommends a number of conditions. Condition one requires submission of plans back to council where it approved. That condition that I mentioned earlier is picked up in condition one and as a standalone condition.
What I meant is actually the swale drain. How would that prevent flooding?
That's a good question and not one that I'm able to answer as a planner, but we have...
I have Vanessa that's able to answer that, so thank you.
Thank you for your question councillor Demetriadis. Generally, the drainage engineers will take an engineering assessment and their referral to our planners. So if you'd wanted, what you're asking would be a question on the, we'd have to take you through the engineering calculations, which we don't have our engineering colleagues with us in the room tonight. So we'd need to come back to you on that one.
That's okay. I was just asking for just a brief example, explanation as to a swale drain and how that, yeah, so it's just a general comment.
Thank you councillor. Through you, Mayor. A swale drain is an engineering-designed area that collects the water and then diverts it into the legal point of discharge into council's drainage system. So it's a purposely designed infiltration area that ensures that the flooding remains on-site and does not flood externally, is collected in that engineering-designed area and then diverted to council's legal point of discharge to the drainage engineering, drainage infrastructure outside of the site.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other question. In terms of the construction of these particular properties, the two dwellings, sorry I should say, will there be any impact, given the setbacks are limited, will there be any impact on the adjacent properties when they do become, when they are being built?
Thank you councillor. Through you, Mayor. The impacts on adjoining properties is not something that's applied for or is provided for in the drawings. There is protection under the Building Act to ensure that private properties external to the site are protected during construction phase, as with all development sites that we deal with here in the city of Darabin.
Do you have any further questions councillor Demetriadis? Councillors, are there any further questions before we move on to our submitters? If not... You have no further questions? All right, thank you. Thank you to our officers. We'll move on to our submitters. If there were no further questions. As I said earlier, we have six submitters this evening and each submitter has up to three minutes to speak. The first submitter I have this evening is Jenny. Is Jenny in the gallery this evening? Jenny, if you can just stand up and come to the lectern.
Sorry, I'm just timing myself. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to councillors for giving residents an opportunity to be heard tonight. My neighbours have asked for me to go first. I'm proudly a lifelong Darabin resident. I was born in Harry Street, which is around the corner from where I live now. In speaking with my neighbours, including many elderly migrants with limited English language skills, I know they are concerned about this proposal, so I seek to speak on their behalf too. As you know, this application has had 38 objections and nearly 250 signatories to an online petition and counting. I want to make it clear, I'm not opposed to dual occupancies. It's the size and the design of this development that has me concerned. If this proposal resembled the dual occupancies previously built in our street, such as that at number 278 that was constructed only a couple of years ago, then I would not be here. However it doesn't, this is a luxury build that we would expect in South Yarra and not in Thornbury. Features like turntable, underground parking, swimming pools and open-air terrace entertainment areas are not designed to add to affordable homes to own or to rent in our community. Whether or not there is a fourth story, open-air terrace will not provide a single person with sleeping facilities. If this application is approved, these two dwellings would be the first four-story houses in our neighbourhood. Now, I know that the report continuously refers to this four-story building as being a two-story, but however you dress it up, when the occupants get into their lift, they'll be pressing four buttons, not two. So I'd encourage you to focus on the substance of the proposal rather than how it is described. Now, as you would be aware, Collin Street is a local street. It's not a main road and it's quite some distance away from the nearest activity centre. And it's been designated as being in an incremental housing change area referred to as Character Precinct F4, with a strong pre- and post-war neighbourhood character. Newer housing built in recent years has retained our neighbourhood style with pitched roofs and single sheer driveways being the typical design. The development's flat roofs heavily frame detailed box-like proportions and the use of symmetry are strongly at odds with the prevailing neighbourhood character. And as you've heard from your officers, it's a constrained site. It's narrow, 14.6 metres frontage, compact 526 square metres, subject to slope and located mid-block. There is simply just too much built form being squeezed onto a compact allotment. Now, Character Precinct F4 states that upper levels should be set bracket a substantial distance from the front facade and to avoid buildings that are out of scale with adjoining buildings that appear to dominate the streetscape. But this is exactly what this development will do. The cantilever balconies, the setbacks, the scar swamp our street in this very limited landscape. Character Precinct F4...
Can you kindly summarise? Because you've gone over time now.
I'm sorry. I will conclude. Character Precinct F4 states that there's a preference for spacious front and rear gardens. That's not what is proposed here. I realise I've run out of time. Councillor Gaetano raised the issue of the crossovers. We're squeezing two dual crossovers. We've shrunk them, or the officers have shrunk them to comply with your 40% frontage.
Thank you.
That's actually going to be quite a risk to school students walking past our street daily. On behalf of our street, I just say please save our street and save what we love about Thornbury. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jenny. Can I please, excuse me, there's no clapping in the gallery. Excuse me. Can I please ask Lisa to come and step up to the lectern?
Hello, everyone. Excuse me, I'm a bit nervous this afternoon, so I might be stuttering and carrying on. But anyway, I'll try. Our family have lived in Collin Street now for over 10 years and we cherish the diversity and sense of community we have around us. Unfortunately, this proposal signals a shift and a disregard for the values that make our community special. It is not acceptable. For us, it casts an imposing shadow on our property, diminishing our privacy and obstructing a once enjoyable view of a westerly blue sky from our garden. And instead, we now have a dreary concrete wall reminiscent of an industrial site. Now, you've got pictures there, you can see exactly what I mean. This oversized structure lacks consideration for the ecology and it will disrupt bird, insect and plant life that I nourish and I look after all the time. A flat roof proposed... A flat roof proposed is not consistent with 90% of existing streetscape and will cause unnecessary heat and thus energy consumption, which doesn't address Darabin's own policy in declaring a climate emergency. Regrettably, the developers' architects have never sought feedback or addressed any concerns we may have. We are forced to live with what we see outside our window every day of our lives and there's no going back. I have to say it, but their proposal is a greedy, uninspired solution, big on the outside but pretty pokey and uninventive in the inside, that contradicts Darabin's planning guidelines, disregarding the incremental change area that we reside in. It needs to go back to the drawing board. I'm just wondering whether any of the planners here or the architects or councillors indeed have actually ambled up our street and experienced it in first hand. Have you felt the ambiance? Have you heard the sounds? Have you smelt the roses? And have you truly grasped the neighbourhood character? Without experiencing it firsthand, you cannot truly comprehend the impact of this development. Whilst I recognise the need for increased housing, this solution threatens to drive up costs for renters and we have many renters in our street. It erodes the cultural history and diversity that define our area. Moreover, it fails to promote meaningful communities and interactions with our neighbourhoods and neighbours. Instead, the proposed development, despite it being reportedly glowingly in the councillor's town report, it has features more akin to being a concrete wall bunker. Basically, the inhabitants will get in quick, they'll secure premises, they'll stay inside and they won't need to leave. And they'll look down on their terrace at everyone in the street. It's definitely not equitable. The departments at council offices handling this process has been questioned. There's been...
We've got 10 seconds left.
Okay, all right. I just want to address the permeability plans that I gave you there. You can see very clearly, it doesn't mean 20%. What's actually happened? Building processes and engineering not outlined in the planning documents will eat into the permeability by which then the planning permit will have already passed. So, you know, we're going to have to have quite a bit of shoring up of the property so we don't fall in. That's pylons, that's concrete. What you think is permeable is not going to actually be permeable. So I dispute the fact that there's 20% permeability. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate your time. Con, is Con in the gallery? Con? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor councillors. The issues that I have is the overlooking. In the actual plans, it has clear glazing. So I request that as part of the conditions that the... It becomes obscured glazing, not film. The location of the plant and equipment for the air conditioners, the pool equipment, they can be right behind my property. I request that they be placed in the basement or in an enclosed room within the building. Other issues that I have is just the visual bulk of the thing. It talks about it being the emerging preferred character. My question is, what is the emerging preferred character? Number of people in here, everyone has an opinion. It's not like a California bungalow or a Victorian or an Edwardian style. It's just a concrete rectangular box with curved varandas at the front. It dominates the land on which it is to be built and it will be the odd one house in the street for anyone who drives past or walks past. And it makes no attempt to integrate with the existing street. The other issue that I have is it's been called a two-story building. I mean, anyone walking past can see that it's going to be three stories. So if you're using the definition of what a story is, yes, it might be only two stories, but when you do the physical count, it's going to be three. So, and that's from a layperson's point of view. The other issue that I have is the two crossovers. I note that it's been reduced to 37.6%. Again, with the steepness of the the driveways as the cars are going to be exiting onto the street, has any thought been given as to, you know, a pedestrian or a school kid or an animal being struck by that? Because they're going to have to drive at speed to get onto the main street. And also the actual, another point is having five medium-sized canopy trees on the property. I'm asking, where are they going to fit? Just looking at the plans, the only place is at the front and when you take into account the narrowing of the driveways, the two path entries into each dwelling...
10 seconds left, if you can kindly summarise.
Yes. There just doesn't seem to be enough space to fit five canopy trees on the extra property. Thank you.
Thank you, Con. Matthew, do I have Matthew in the gallery, please? Matthew, are you in the gallery? Thank you.
Mayor, deputy mayor, councillors and staff, fellow Darabin residents and residents of Collins and Alston Streets, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Matthew Robertson. My wife, Dr Madonna Graham, is in the audience as well. We live in Alston Street, Thornbury, 60 metres to the north-east of this address. We are concerned about potential impacts of the proposed development on the amenity of neighbours, not just the immediate ones, but in the immediate further surrounding area and generally the creation of precedents for future construction in a general residential zone like this one. I'm concerned about the proposal for vehicle turntables in the basement of each structure. These risk noise and operating vibration to surrounding properties, especially given the clay soil profile, which is a known transmission medium for noise and vibration through the ground. Turntables would not be needed if this application was for townhouses, two townhouses with garage access from the more common side driveway. I'm also concerned that the proposed rooftop terrace would result in a loss of privacy in habitable and other spaces in neighbouring properties at 157 and 161 Colin Street and 1618 and 20 Alston. If approved, in any case, enforceable conditions should include the installation of opaque screening panels, that have been mentioned by Con, and a raised height requirement for all side and rear panels to above the eye-line of an average adult. The current standard appears to be lower than that and is unacceptable. I'm also concerned about the proposed swimming pools at the rear of each site. From a recent example in Alston Street, other side, pool filter noise and lighting have the potential for an adverse impact on neighbours. If the proposal is improved, however, enforceable conditions should be included, including pool lighting, a maximum height and light shields to minimise glare and impact on neighbours. And in the case of pool filters, placement in properly insulated enclosures to minimise noise. In terms of garden and light, I'm concerned about the likely loss of access to direct sunlight for several hours of the day impacting each side neighbour in particular for almost the entire length of their blocks and at a considerable height, likely to result in the loss of many existing garden plantings that have taken years and a lot of care and attention to put in. And also not to be dismissed and imposition of an increase in household running costs where a house loses natural sunlight, warmth to the walls of the house and requires more heating to be used. In terms of a general comment, overall in its current form, this is an inappropriate development because it does not take into account detrimental impact on neighbours' amenity. However, if council decides to approve it, some examples I've just given, significant enforceable conditions are needed. The impact of council's decision will be felt for decades. Please make a good decision. Thank you.
Liam, do I have Liam in the gallery this evening? If you can just step up. Thank you, Liam.
Hi, I'm just Liam. Really quickly, I just want to say, I'm only using two minutes of my time and using the other minute for this lovely lady, 92 years old, who just didn't know how to register. So firstly, I just want to say... Firstly, I just want to say, privacy is a very big issue that I see. From where I live, where we live, my parents and I, we just, the windows will go into our bathrooms and our backyard, which is like very worrying for me because it's just, privacy is just gone completely. And another, on... Addedly, the development inequity, which means we can't build a second house in the back because of the less of money and like the windows inside makes it like less available to build other houses, yeah? So if we want to build houses in the future, we won't be able to because the people that our neighbours would be, not allow us to pretty much because of like the laws facing like the light, light being gone and stuff like that. And then I understand that these people want to have a life as well, a very good life, which as the house is, it looks, it's a very fancy and very thing, like, you know. And then, but the thing is, I have a future as well and like, I feel like I need to, like, the better it is for me. But they need to be compensated as well. I mean, I don't know how to like think. But anyways, thank you for listening. I'll give it off to...
councillor staff and everyone here present. I'm Pamela Murray. I've lived in the area 87 years. I was aged six to 20 and a half in 156 Dalbrad Road, Thornbury. And I then moved, I have lived at 162 Colin Street, Thornbury for 73 years in a weatherboard house built by my late husband and myself. My children grew up in this house, surrounded by neighbours who looked after and cared for each other. I feel devastated that awful buildings like the one proposed for 159 Colin Street are encroaching on our street. I'm very concerned about the lack of privacy we will have from people overlooking the street from an open-air terrace. I'm turning 93 on Thursday. I'm sad to think that my lovely neighbours will have this monstrosity to live with in the future. I thank you.
Well, Pam, you're doing exceptionally well and it's lovely for you to come down here this evening. I believe that's all our submitters this evening. Oh, okay.
I think that was my mistake. Sorry, Lenny. How could I forget Lenny? Lenny has registered to speak. Sorry.
Lenny? I don't have Lenny on our list.
Sorry, he's registered as John, hence you're confused now, John, but he's Lenny to me.
John?
Good day. How is it all going? Thanks very much for letting me have a chat. I'm John Lennon. I've been, came to Australia as a carpenter. I served me time as a carpenter when I was a young man, over 48 years ago now. And I've been a registered builder in Victoria and since 1992, building practitioner. Now, looking at these plans, the permeability, I'm a bit worried about the whole lot because the drawings are very deceptive. They're showing brick walls of 100mm down along the boundaries. And they're supposed to be retaining the walls. Now, retaining the walls because of the basement, we're going down three metres in depth. Now, there's a thing called screw pylons that you screw into the ground to give you a support, especially if you're going over two and a half metres deep. Now, that's just one little thing and that doesn't show that on the plan. Doesn't show to the planning guides here. It just shows it as a little line, little 90mm line. And that's fair enough. They'd believe that, do you know what I mean? Now, when I done my examination of the plan, and believe me, I done a good examination of it, I found out that there was a, the basement alone is 375 square metres. There's 30 square metres of a swimming pool, okay? Which is right up behind it. They have a foundation that's going from wall to wall, over the ground, over the basement that goes right across. And that covers, as I said, 375 square metres. So when you add it all up with driveways, swimming pools, what is it, paving out the back and everything, you know, for livable area. Now, the paving is actually sitting on top of this big concrete slab that runs right across around the area, which is supported by these pylons, not 100mm. Because 100mm won't be good enough, as simple as that. You can argue all you want, but that's, the engineers should be able to tell you that. Oh, here, hang on. Now, it's all, it's all happening because a fancy drawing being put in front of you. And lots of people don't know what that is, but when you're actually doing a building, you know, that's it. So anyway, that comes to, oh, when you add up all these things just on the basement part of it and the driveways and everything else, that comes to 463 square metres of concrete. Now, that's not counting the crush rock that has to go on the outside of it for drainage, for this drainage that they're talking about for flooding. They have to have aggie pipes and everything underneath that. Now, so 463 square metres and the building site is 526. That comes to the site coverage, the footprint of 88%. 88%, not 50% like what you say in 5503-3B8. Saves you site coverage 50% on your own paperwork. But when you actually do the sums, it's 88%. Now, that only gives a 12% permeability. Now, you're saying that you've got 23% permeability on your 5503-4B9. So I just don't know how it's happening. I don't know how you just walk your cases out. You know, the school that I went to was straight square.
Time's up. Can you kindly summarise? Thank you.
Well, you know, altogether, each house is 46 squares, if you know what a square is. A square is 10 foot by 10 foot. So each one is worth 46, which is 92 square metres of building. That's a lot, that's a massive building, you know, for a four-bedroom, for any four-bedroom house. So all I can say, you know, is that they... You know, it's just a nightmare. The whole thing is a nightmare and the drawings are deceitful on that end of it. And the, you know, they're being deceived, as simple as that, with no engineers, you know? And they're endorsing the plan when there's no, they haven't even got the paperwork for it. It's as simple as that. You're just saying, oh, yes, tick, 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 tick.
Thank you. Your time's up. I've allowed ample timing. Thank you.
Well, thanks very much for your time. Thank you.
I do have the applicant here this evening who I believe wants to speak. Do we go with the first one? Besh, is it Beshar? Beshara? Beshara?
Good evening, madam mayor, councillors and council officers. My name is Sue. I'm a planning consultant from Planning and Property Partners. I'm here to speak on behalf of the permanent applicant and thank you all for the opportunity to address you this evening. I worry your council officers have provided a really thorough assessment of the proposal against the relevant planning policies and planning controls. I don't wish to use this opportunity to repeat any of them. Just wanted to address some of the issues that's been raised tonight and also to provide some highlights of the proposal. Now firstly, the site is a regularly sized allotment in an established residential area that has excellent access to services and transport. There is very, very clear planning policy support for increased housing density at locations such as this. The Darabin planning scheme identifies this area as an incremental change area. The proposal, what it seeks to do is to increase the total number of dwellings from one to two. This level of change is evident in the immediate environs already. Now, there's some existing examples. It includes a three-unit development at 173 Colin Street on the opposite side of the street, a two-unit development at 174 Colin Street, a two-unit development at number four Alston Street, which is currently under construction. It's flat roof, side by side, very similar to the proposal that is before you today. And I also note that there's a further two-dwelling development that council has approved at 163 Colin Street. And this is a relatively recent approval under the current planning system. And the approval was granted on the 29th of August 2022. I think one of the things that's also important to acknowledge is very recently in September, there was an amendment to the planning scheme across all Victorian planning... there was a, um, an amendment to the planning scheme across all Victorian planning, um, uh, uh, the planning, Victorian planning provisions. And what it does is a codified clause fifty-five or res code to those of us who refer to it in that way. Um, in a nutshell, if you meet the standard, you're automatically deemed to have complied with a relevant objective. The council officers have undertaken a very detailed analysis in its appendix, I believe it's appendix F. This proposal complies with every single one of those standards. So under the current planning system, this proposal is deemed to comply with all of those objectives. And that includes building height, as we're required to measure under the planning scheme. This building height, this proposal has a maximum building height of eight point four four metres, which is well below the mandatory building height limit of eleven metres or twelve, depending on the slope of the site. The building site coverage is not calculated by working out every single house stand within the site. There's a particular planning requirement on how that needs to be addressed, and the proposal complies with the requirement at fifty-five percent. There are no overlooking, unreasonable overlooking, there's already planning permit conditions that require screening to be, um, implemented across all proposed habitable room buildings. The front, side and rear setback, including, including those setbacks that is there to protect the amenity of the adjoining neighbours, including solar and daylight access. All of those standards have been met.
Your time's up, but I'll allow you extra time to summarise, thank you, Sue.
The supplementary shadow diagrams that's been provided, that's been provided above and beyond what the planning control has, um, asked the perma-applicant to provide. What it confirms is it will not, the proposed development will not cast any shadow on the adjoining solar panels at any time of the day on the September equinox, which is what the planning scheme requires us to assess. We have provided supplementary shadow diagrams to demonstrate the extent of impact on the winter solstice, which is your worst-case scenario. That set of analysis shows that there is a very minor impact at nine AM on the winter solstice of one point four percent. I have asked the architect, who is here today, should you have any questions, to calculate at what time of the day there will be no additional impact, and that occurs at nine point oh six AM. So, um.
Sorry, ma'am, I'd like to call a point of order. Um, I believe there was an overtime, and no other submitter was allowed to, uh, speak overtime.
Uh, every single submitter spoke overtime.
This was a minute and thirty.
No, there was a minute and nearly forty seconds in the last one, I'm sorry, councillor Demetriatus.
However, at the beginning, they were cut short of their speeches.
Yes, and I, that's why I allow every one of them to be way over, every single one of them.
After the first few.
Uh, every one of them, every one of them received more than three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I agree, not Liam, um, however, they spoke within time, but I, I allow them to continue speaking.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do have one more speaker this evening. I have one more speaker this evening that has, uh, that will be speaking, which is from the applicant, I believe it's Donald, is that correct? Donald, if you can step up to lectern.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councillors, for giving us all the opportunity to speak today on this development. My name's Don, I live in Thornbury, I'm a member of Yes in My Backyard Melbourne, and I'd like to speak today in favour of the development at one fifty-nine Colin Street. The proposed development is two stories, the same height as both immediately neighbouring prop- properties, and it would add just one dwelling to the block. And directly over the road are two other lots of land that have already been converted into two and three dwelling townhouses. This site is scheduled to allow incremental change. If this isn't incremental, what is? This proposal has been called overdevelopment. If this is overdevelopment, what would constitute an appropriate level of development? If this development isn't built, what will happen to the family that doesn't get to move to Thornbury? They inevitably get pushed further out to where new houses can be built on the suburban fringe, where there's no established community, little infrastructure, long commutes spent away from their families, and a complete dependency on their car to make any trip. This development represents sensible, high-quality densification that allows more people to make better use of existing infrastructure and help support local businesses. Allowing more density in Thornbury means less greenfield development and lets us retain more open and green space. People have different wants and needs and it should, and should have more choice when it comes to their housing. Allowing modest increases in density like the one proposed here provides more people with more options for where they live and the types of housing that they occupy. We live in a great part of the world. This modest development and others like it, let us share our little part of Melbourne with just a few more people. I implore council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donald. Um, that is all for all our submitters, and I appreciate your time for coming this evening and, and presenting. Um, I know that there are for many of you that are watching also online, and, um, and a great effort in getting, uh, your over two hundred and fifty signatures and your petition, also the thirty-eight, um, objectives that have been submitted. Um, we'll move on to councillors. So councillors, do I have a move in reference to this item? I had councillor Demetriatus hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I have an alternate motion to raise on this item.
Now, is it possible that we can get that up on the screen, please? Is that your alternative motion, councillor Demetriatus?
Um, that's part of it. Uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that item? Councillor Greco? Councillor Demetriatus?
Um, thank you to everyone for coming here tonight and for sharing your views on this important planning application. I am, um, really surprised that we've had thirty-eight objections and two hundred and fifty petition, uh, six signatories to the petitions, eh, which means this is a big issue for our community. So I too am not in support of this planning application, and that's for a number of reasons. Firstly, the proposal does not adequately address, uh, the preferred neighbourhood character and the area contrary to, uh, clause twenty-two point oh two, the neighbourhood character of Darabin, um, Darabin's planning scheme and the neighbourhood character guidelines, and this is in regards to a number of factors. Firstly, the proposed side setbacks are not in accordance with the predominant setback pattern within the street. Also, the rear secluded private open space area of each dwelling are unable to accommodate large canopy trees due to the minimal setback from the rear boundary and the dominance of paving and pools and associated equipment and showers. So the inclusion of two driveways and an additional crossover to Colin Street result in an excessive paving with the front garden areas and a dominance of car parking within the front setback. The upper levels are not setback, um, are not, uh, setback, I said, which are substantial distance from the ground level front facade, contrary to pattern of development in the, in the street, resulting in unreasonable visual bulk impacts when viewed from the street and adjoining properties. Um, and the dwelling are out of scale with adjoining buildings which will dominate the street, scape through the inclusion of a rooftop terrace. So that, in terms of neighbourhood character, I, um, they're the points that I believe need to be addressed. And I believe that this proposal is an overdevelopment of the site. It's inconsistent with neighbourhood character and it's contrary to, to the clauses in the Darabin scheme, and the clauses are listed above. Um, the proposed accessways are also not at least three metres wide, which is contrary to the, um, Darabin planning scheme. The proposed development does not comply with, um, the standards, some of the standards in the Darabin planning scheme, which you'll be able to read later, as it does not allow for an appropriate level of landscaping to be provided, which respects the character of the neighbourhood. The design and layout of the development may contribute to additional flooding of the drainage system, contrary to the objectives and standards of the Darabin planning scheme. Also, the limited opportunity of landscaping combined with the extent of driveway paving and pool infrastructure results in stormwater management that does not meet best practice performance objectives for stormwater quality as contained in the urban stormwater best practice management, uh, environment management guidelines. And it does not sufficiently contribute to cooling, improving local habitat and providing attractive and enjoyable spaces, which is contrary to, uh, Darabin's planning scheme, and I might add to our declaration on the climate emergency. So in conclusion, I hope that all councillors will support this alternate motion in support of stopping inappropriate developments coming into our neighbourhoods and affecting our lifestyles as we've heard here today from many residents who've emailed and called us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. To our second one, would you like to speak on the item? Gaetano, Greco?
Ma'am, well, I reserve my right to speak later.
Do I have any other councillor, Lawrence?
Um, yes, um, I, uh,'d like to endorse, um, and speak for councillor Demetriatus's, um, uh, motion. Now, in Darabin, we only have two zones that give us any protection. We only got half of Matthew Guy that we wanted and should have had, that Glen Iris and Hawthorn and everyone else got. That's the neighbourhood character zone and residential, uh, the residential zone number one. That's the only protection we have in this city apart from the single-dwelling covenants of Oak Hill, of Marylands, of Elphington. Otherwise, this whole place would actually look like some other suburb. When we wanna have a discussion about these side streets, uh, it's great to go on ABC Radio and say five stories should be on every side street, as the YIMBYS said. But we actually fought hard for the very minimal amount of protection we got. And it, it is one of the hysterical things, uh, that signing off of our planning zone, which, planning scheme. Now, this proposal is very much like number twenty-six in Jenkin Street, which happens to be in one of the two zones that offer any slight protection for side streets. We're very generous, our community ten years ago said yes to development along the tramway corridors, which at the time, planning experts said if all of Melbourne did this, we could accommodate an extra million people inside the inner circle. They lay bare those sites, so let's not play games. We have a flooding problem in this whole city. We have a climate emergency, and this is a bunker for a heat island. This repeated creates a heat island, we have thirteen percent tree coverage in this city. These trees don't even, you're borrowing these trees from the neighbours. Now, these are all planning matters and climate change matters. We have fought in this council to have climate change addressed in the planning scheme. If there's one place we should be defending it, it's in our two most protected zonings, re- resident, residential one and the actual neighbourhood zone, and in the interwar housing that has gabled roofs. I inspected the whole site, I inspected the other developments, they were not all flat roof. And in fact, they provide humble, affordable housing, and this housing being built is not there to give an opportunity to people who might buy and wallen. It's simply an abuse of our scheme.
Thank you. Can I kindly please ask, no clapping in the gallery, if you wanna clap, I'll allow it at the end, but enough, thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to propose an alternative pathway forward. And that's because in my seven years on council, I have never seen VCAT uphold a decision such as this when a development is one hundred percent compliant in a general residential zone. And I fear that we might make a popular decision here tonight, but it may not be an effective decision. Because the community who has concerns about this development might walk away a later tonight only to have your hopes completely dashed in nine months' time when VCAT approves the development as it is. Instead, I'm proposing that we amend the development that has been proposed tonight. And I've got two amendments, and they've been circulated to all councillors. And those amendments are that the developer have to pay for the relocation of any solar panels that would be impacted in any way by the development, and that the terrace at the top floor be deleted from the development. I believe that these amendments will actually give the community a better outcome than they're going to get if this application goes down tonight. Because if VCAT approves this in nine months' time, it will include the rooftop terrace, and it will not make any provision for relocation of solar panels because that is not something VCAT ever does.
Um, ten point one.
And your point of order is?
Yep, ten point one, uh, G, it's a misleading and false statement. Councillor Rennie stated that if VCAT, um, changes, uh, approves this development, it will do so in whatever way she, she explained, however, we can't be sure whether VCAT will approve it and if they do on what basis.
Thank you, I've heard from you, and I'll call it that I'm happy to continue on. Thank you, councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. It is unlikely that the developer will go to VCAT to overturn conditions if we put conditions such as these on this development. And I've put it to you all that a development such as this without the rooftop terrace, I've heard loud and clear from community members here that the rooftop terrace is something they feel will have impact, that removing that rooftop terrace and ensuring that any overpaneled solar panels are, any overshadowed solar panels are moved is a better outcome than VCAT will deliver for the community. I think that's important, and that's why I'm going to vote against this motion. And I have an alternate motion proposed that would see the development approved with those conditions, which I think in the longer term will provide a much better outcome to the community that's here tonight.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak in reference to or against this alternative motion at the moment?
Mayor, can I ask a question? It's just off the back of what councillor Rennie's just raised as a foreshadowing alternative.
Um, normally we don't have questions, but I will, um,
It's, it's only.
Be entertained by it because considering the controversy and, and the amount of people that are watching, not only online, but, um.
Thanks, ma'am, it's probably just a procedural question really, which is that in the event that councillor, in the event that councillor Demetriatus's motion um, doesn't pass, which is a refusal, and council has to go back to the substantive motion and considers councillor Rennie's alternative, which is approval with more significant conditions. At that point in time, could I request, um, if that is the case, that, um, additional conditions also be considered to pick up some of the issues that objectors have raised this evening? So I'll just foreshadow that and ask if that can be something that can be addressed, and I'll send through the request to officers.
Uh, absolutely, but I will ask, um, Vanessa if that's a possibility, so just be with me one moment. Yeah, so if councillor Demetriatus, um, agrees, um, that depends in, if her alternative motion doesn't get up, and then we can go forward to the next section in reference to adding, um, extra, um, recommendations to it, councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. In that case, um, I will speak to this motion, and that is just to note that I'm, I'm going to abstain from this motion, and the reason why at this stage I'm gonna abstain is because having heard councillor Rennie's argument, um, one of the challenges that we have with an item like this is that from a statutory planning point of view, and that is actually the grounds upon which we need to consider, we need to understand whether it's actually compliant or not. Um, we've heard from our officers, and I completely respect, I've had a number of emails from residents and some phone calls, and I completely respect the concerns, I understand those concerns, I've experienced the same thing with a, a development right next door to my own house. So I totally understand, um, the, what this looks like. To be really frank, I don't like the look of this thing at all. It's not an attractive development, I wouldn't want it next door to me. But what I feel and what I say doesn't matter in this situation because I need to make a decision and assess this based on the statutory planning considerations. That's actually what's before us. Um, what we have before us is something which, according to the Victorian planning scheme, um, is compliant, and I find that really disappointing. Um, I actually also understand councillor Lawrence's, um, comments about the lack of protection for residential and neighbourhood character in the city of Darabin. Um, that's actually beyond our control because that's actually ultimately a decision at the state level, um, which is quite unfortunate. So I'm trying to find a way forward here. I don't think I can just su- support the refusals as it's listed there um, because it does not actually go so far as to provide what I think residents actually are wanting to see, which is something which is genuinely delivering residential amenity and something that is. which is something which is genuinely delivering residential amenity and something that is more sympathetic. So it may be that, that an approval tonight which has more severe and serious, um, conditions actually causes some thought and consideration by the applicant about whether they really want to go ahead. That is actually up to them, that's not a matter that we can decide. But I'm prepared to consider putting more serious conditions, and hence I'll be abstaining from this particular vote to consider what the other option might be.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Any other speakers in reference to this item? You reserved your right, councillor Greco, would you like to speak now?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Williams. I think councillor Demetriatus has covered off on all the main points in relation to this alternate motion, and she's done that in a very articulate manner. I think that this application turns on the issue of neighbourhood character. That is the central, that is the central issue. When we say that it could be compliant in relation to all the matters, I would say that it's not compliant in relation to neighbourhood character. Why is it not compliant in relation to neighbourhood character? The points have been made there in the alternative motion, but essentially, this is an overdevelopment for the site. Um, it was mentioned by one of the, um, submitters that this is a, um, a modest, um, uh, development. Instead, it's a bold development. That's the nature of it. The nature of this type of development is, its feature is its boldness. So as a result of that, it does not maintain, uh, the neighbourhood character. It's not consistent with post-war, um, um, architecture industry, which is dominant in, in that, in that neighbourhood. So as a result of that, I don't believe that this is, uh, compliant because of, it does not meet the neighbourhood character reasons. Also was mentioned that, um, you know, around about the issue about being a popular decision or not. I just remind councillors, in August, in this chamber, on the, um, on the fourteenth of August, in relation to twenty-four Jenkin Street, Northgood, a similar application without a rooftop, bold application, and was rejected unanimously by this council. Actually councillor, um, Rennie was the one that actually moved the motion to reject that application. So in order for us to be consistent and not hypocritical with our community, we need to reject this application to be consistent. And in order to, we can't use the argument of VCAT, what VCAT's going to approve or not. We're not here, we're not a casino here in relation to VCAT. We have to make a judgment in relation to what is before us and stand by that judgment and then argue that judgment before VCAT. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in reference to this situation, I was in a very similar situation going back twelve years ago. I fought a developer that wanted to develop something seven stories next door to me on Plenty Road. I knocked over three hundred homes and got over a hundred and fifty objections. There were seven of us that went to, uh, went to VCAT. Um, I tried to speak to council about it, and they said, yep, it ticks every box. They've done everything in line with the applicant and, uh, all the res codes. It was something I had to learn, I had to learn about res codes, building codes, environment codes, you name it. And the fact that every single planning, uh, scheme was outdated, I was told no matter what you think you do or want to do, it's ticked all the boxes, plus Darabin Council's planning scheme is outdated, so you don't have a leg to stand on. When I went to VCAT, um, the person, um, the engineer there at the time, I swear to you, could sell sand back to, um, back to, um, I guess, a place that abundance of sand. And my point is, is that, um, I felt I was losing. But in fact, when the chairman came back and said that this development, he came and visited my site and said, yes, he thought it was an overdevelopment, even though that it ticked every box from a, 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 I guess, from a planning perspective, but realised that it was just too impacting on the individual of a home. Um, my point is, is that the chairman did give recommendations in reference to what was needed, so it went from a, a seven story to a five story. And then a few years again after that, the applicant decided to put another application in. And guess what? I fought that application again, and I'm the only resident ever existing to win an applicant twice on the same applicant at VCAT. So, and that is the reason why I came and ran on Darabin Council, because I wanted to make a change regarding planning. And despite what people say, you can win. The underdog, the little man, the person who you felt didn't know anything or didn't understand, can win. And having the support of your neighbours and people like you have here this evening is very important, because collectively, you're more powerful. So in that case, I'm now going to put the item to vote, all those in, um, sorry councillor Demetrius, I apologise, I thought I had the last say, sorry.
Um, thank you ma'am, thank you for that, um, very genuine speech. I, uh, wanted to say that councillor, in response to councillor Rennie's claim that she has a, 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 uh, separate motion that she wants to raise if this one fails. Um, what that means is that the motion that she wants to raise is to approve the development with only small amendments that she suggested in her speech. So councillor Rennie did not address all the issues raised here in this particular amendment, and that includes the neighbourhood character, and as councillor Greco said, this is one of the main arguments of this, this particular development. So we have to make sure that, um, the developers are very clear uh, about what that means in terms of, uh, building appropriate developments in this area. There's also, this particular amendment addresses the permeability risk, the flooding risk, the design and layout of the two driveways, as well as the limiting landscapes which does not allow, which does not address adequately the local habitat, um, or doesn't provide enough open space. So, um, I'm standing by this alternate motion, uh, because unfortunately, my understanding is that councillor Rennie's other, um, alternate, other recommendation won't address all these aspects in detail or at all. So, um, I wanted to thank you all for coming here today. Um, I understand this may have been, it is a stressful period as councillor, as the mayor has mentioned. But, um, thank you all for being here. I really hope that all councillors support this alternate motion in support of stopping overdevelopments and saving our streets and our neighbourhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in reference to this item, I'll now put, put it to vote, all those in favour, the alternative motion that's on the screen. I've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco and councillor Williams. All those against, all those four. Sorry, so all those against this alternative motion, I've got councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, and abstaining, I've got councillor McCarthy and councillor Hannan. Thank you. That item has now been, alternative motion has now been put forward.
Ma'am, you need to use your casting vote, there's only four of us.
Well, I'll use my casting vote to go with the alternative motion, which is the issue of refusal of grant of a planning permit. The planning committee has now decided not to support the application in the issue of a refusal to grant a planning permit on the grounds. The applicant and the objectors will be notified in writing, and the applicant can appeal the decision at VCAT. The process of the appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation. Thank you all this evening for coming. Uh, we still have another item for business this evening, so we have a general planning information schedule for VCAT applications. I've got councillor Rennie as the mover, and I have councillor Lawrence as the second, all those in favour? That has been passed unanimously, thank you. Consideration of reports considered confidential, there are no confidential reports, so I will now close the meeting at twelve minutes past eight.